Good evening, the time is now seven thirty PM and I'd like to call to order the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Library Trustees. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional, and ancestral homelands of Native peoples, in honor with gratitude the land itself and the indigenous people who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. I'd like to welcome all of you for attending our meeting tonight and hope you're all staying cool and safe. Caitlin, if you could proceed to go call.
Trustee Doherty?
Here.
Trustee Humphreys?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Here.
Trustee Nienberg will not be in attendance tonight. Trustee Sladek?
Here.
President Gagani?
Here.
Item number four is the approval of minutes from July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
As you can see, we have a new style of minutes. We have taken advantage of that minute service and the second one is way better than the first one we tried.
Do we have a motion?
I'm overly approved and that's as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented as well as a second. You can go ahead and open the floor for any remarks. If we have no remarks, we can go ahead and proceed with approval. All those approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. And any exceptions.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much, that item has passed. Item number five is financial matters from July twenty-twenty-three and August twenty-twenty-three in voices.
And also included in this packet is the June fund balance and revenue reports that were missing from last month's packet. As you can see, property taxes have started to be reflected, those revenues have been included in both the June and July reports. As of July, we are fifty-eight percent through the year, we have collected sixty-six percent of our revenue, our investment income remains very strong. And then expenditure side, we have spent fifty-one point four percent of our budget. Special legal does continue to outstrip its budget line, it's over four hundred percent due to the third-party investigation which has finally concluded with the final report received by the board, so there will be a closed session tonight. And that's over seventeen thousand dollars so far and you will see that there is twenty-four hundred more this month. And that's all that I have. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the financial matters as presented.
I will second. All right, we have a motion to approve financials as presented as well as a second. Any other comments or questions? Proceed with the vote. All right, we'll go ahead and proceed to the roll call.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphreys?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
President Gagani?
Yes.
The item has passed. Item number six is public comments. As a reminder, public comments may be also submitted online at DGlibrary.org backslash feedback or email to the Board of Library Trustees@libraryboard@dglibrary.org. As a reminder, public comments are limited to five minutes per individual and we ask that you please remain respectful and quiet when someone's speaking. We do have a thirty-minute public comment time limit, but we will see how many individuals are interested in speaking tonight. So with that being said, go ahead and open the floor. Leave my news right before you, if you'd like to go second.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Eileen Burner, resident. I'm the proud Catholic woman that spoke to you two months ago about the disparaging comment towards Catholics in the land acknowledgement statement. The revision that you have in your packets today changes little. The line in dispute now reads, "The federal government and officials from Catholic and other Christian churches coerced Native families into sending their children to live and attend classes at boarding schools without visitation." The underlying document that I previously cited, which showed that the Catholic Church as a minor player, has been removed and replaced with a vague document that opens more questions than answers. The new document does not confer any dominance on the Catholic participation in the boarding schools. Why do you insist on saying "the federal government and officials from Catholic and other Christian churches"? Why not just say "the federal government and officials from Christian churches"? There is no, and I repeat, no evidence of a predominance of the Catholic Church in this history. Words matter and this is a clear case of Catholic bashing. I ask you to reject this version and send it back for further revision. Thank you. I find this very personal, as you can probably tell. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marsha Richardson. I'm a Downers Grove resident and a proud owner and active owner of the Downers Grove Public Library card. I would personally like to thank you, the board, and the staff for having in your collection LGBTQ resources for young people. I am the very proud parent of a now adult gay child and I wish, sincerely wish, that those resources had been available when our son was navigating his way through his adolescence and into his adulthood. I think he might not have felt so alone in his journey had those resources been available to him. I know as a parent, I would have been better equipped to help him, guide him, educate us all, had those resources been available. So again, I would like to sincerely thank you, each and every one of you, for making those resources available, as you do other resources that deal with the very complicated human condition. Thank you, I really appreciate it. And I've brought with me tonight a group who are here to just reinforce what I'm saying. We sincerely appreciate what you've done for the youth in this community. Thank you.
My name is Bob Camarado. We've been residents of Downers Grove for twenty-two years. It's been a wonderful community. I echo everything my spouse has indicated. When you talked earlier about your fiscal condition, I look at my property tax twice a year and I'm very pleased to see those funds that support the commons that are part of this community. So thank you for your efforts and appreciate your work.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Laura Hoist. I appreciate the sensitivity of the topic. I am here to address LGBTQ with respect for the couple they just commented, specifically related to their family and their situation. I think that there is no desire on my part or generally to restrict resources from the library, however, what we're seeing is marketing and influencing that has started in our public schools and also is pervasive in the library. The LGBTQ romance flyers are prominently displayed on the main level, second level, throughout the library. It is, I interpret it as a marketing tool because you can't get away from it and it's influencing our children to go in a specific direction that aligns with an agenda, which is why we find this to be objectionable. So wanting to be open-minded, I selected the first book that's a recommendation, apparently a recommendation because it's prominently displayed, Conventionally Yours by Annabeth Albert. I read the book, it was difficult to read, it tells the story of two boys who are teenagers that were rivals in carp, they attended a tournament together, got to know each other and, you know, started a relationship and plan to spend the rest of their lives together. And there's illustrations in the book that are, you know, intimate illustrations such as what we find in the book, gender queer. So the reason that many are concerned about this is the increase in the number of kids that are being influenced to transition their gender and to be focused on sexual materials when they should be in school concentrating, they should be in the library concentrating and what it is they need to learn to become successful and productive in life. So in my opinion, reading this book, Conventionally Yours, was a waste of time, I wouldn't allow it to be on my shelf at home, that is my decision, so I'm going to be returning it to the library tonight. A growing number of states, including Illinois, are directing public schools to help young students make gender transitions. Educators are told to actively engage in this and to keep such information secret from parents. The library's gender-affirm, deviant sexual images that are on books displayed prominently in the library, not just on the shelf, and their anti-white policies are directly assaulting our children. It's time for this board to stop advancing the leftist political agenda that is related to this effort. Consumers are fighting back against school practices, big companies and financial advisors are starting to drop their DEI initiatives to respond to investor revolts and recover from their losses. This library board should take this shift seriously. As you know, Anheuser-Busch has lost three hundred and ninety-five million dollars and counting over at the Bud Light controversy. Target sales have plummeted after the Pride Month backlash. Starbucks is paying the price for going woke, it has been ordered to pay two point seven million to a stellar managing employee who was fired for being white. That was the reason she was fired, so she recovered in court that amount of money. So like many in this community related to this, we are objecting to the book ban law because we believe that Representative Staubamurray who sponsored the bill and Governor Pritzker who signed it, you know, want these book bans to create a way to silence parents and conservative viewpoints in the library. We do need balance in this library and too often we find that historically marginalized and LGBTQ are being given preference or prioritized. So we want there to be balance, we want all the constituents to be served. Staubamurray claims it's extremist conservatives that are banning books, but the truth is, as we see it, is that, you know, we're objecting to sexually explicit materials, it's not about banning books or prohibiting them from being published. So parents have been more vocal to protect their kids, it's understandable that they've been more vocal and want inappropriate pornography to be removed from libraries in public schools and in the public library. So objecting to the comic graphics and gender queer was featured last month and we reiterate that it's a highly politicized effort, this law is a highly politicized effort to further the indoctrination and sexualization of the kids. You know, there are many in this community that think that that is inappropriate in schools and in libraries. This library has on six separate occasions refused to purchase the book Irreversible Damage, we talked about that last month, that is one example of a book that expresses conservative views and reports on the harm done to children by the push to gender transition. So we are asking that you consider this seriously and provide true balance in the library and post family-centered restrictions that help us parents monitor what our kids are seeing and being told and asked to read. Stop prohibiting books or materials that depict and espouse leftist ideas that are ideas that you disagree with. You know, we all can disagree, but we can respect each other at the same time and I'm encouraging that.
Is my time up?
Thank you. So I appreciate your attention to this topic, thank you.
Linda Schranz, long-time Downers Grove resident, long-time Downers Grove Public Library user. There were a couple of things in the news this week that caught my attention and prompted me to come and talk to this board. First is Laura Ann Carlton, was shot and killed last Friday at her shop in Cedar Bling, California. She was shot by a man because she was flying a pride flag outside of her shop. Laura was a sixty-six-year-old, straight, white woman, mother of nine, and she displayed the flag as her support and as a symbol for her support of the LGBTQ plus community. And while I've been long aware that the LGBTQ community itself have many physical dangers presented upon them, I hadn't really truly comprehended before what courage it takes in this country today to be an ally, to support people who are in the LGBTQ community. I'm an ally, I go to the church across the street there and we proudly display the pride flag at our church outside. And while I might have had some run-ins with some people who might be considered homophobic or transphobic, I never really thought that I could be a victim of violence because of the fact that I have empathy and Christian love for marginalized people. So it was with that realization that I wanted to come and thank the board and the library's staff for the courage that they have been showing to stand up and express their support for the LGBTQ plus community, with their commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, with the books and programs that are available, and their support and outreach to the pride community. And this is especially in relationship to recent threats that have been exposed, bomb threats to many of our neighboring libraries. So I know how difficult this must be for you every day to come in and wonder what's going to be, you know, happening in our library today. So thank you very much for your bravery and please continue to make sure that the people at Downers Grove realize that you support the respect and dignity of all people who come through the doors. Thank you.
Good evening, Ed Pollock, longtime resident, big fan of the library. I wanted to speak to you because last week, or I'm sorry, last meeting, one of the big talking points was people were trying to ban the book Gender Queer and their argument was that it shouldn't be seen by children, it was being read to children, it's too readily available to children. So I thought I'd do a little fact-checking on that and I looked it up and it is not in children's room, it does not read to children, it is in the adult section on the second floor, completely different floor. So I always find when people use lies and deception to make their argument that they lose all credibility with me. Furthermore, I think when they're relying on disinformation that really kind of tries to undermine this entire process of getting feedback. So the best defense against disinformation is critical thinking and so I would ask that when you hear complaints or when you hear comments here, I hope that the board does her own fact-checking before making any decisions. In fact, go ahead and fact-check me, if you take a look in card catalog, you can see Gender Queer, it's currently checked out, there's a link that says where is it? And if you click on that, you'll see it says Downers Grove Library, second floor, adult section. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janet Wingham, a longtime resident of Downers Grove and a proud library card holder and supporter of the library. And I'm here to update or mention a little bit about one of the topics that was discussed last meeting and mentioned again here, especially the title that you've been requesting to purchase, Irreversible Damage. I've been prompted to read this book, I agreed to do that, I haven't finished it, I barely, I have started it, but when we left last meeting, it was my impression that you all, we knew that you rejected the book, my impression was that there are waitlists everywhere and folks who desperately want this book can't get their hands on it. I ordered the book through the library for you all, through the library loan, I got this book the next day. I ordered it because I thought I'd be waiting for it for a while. It turns out that the long line is of twenty-some people is for the audiobook, there may be only one copy of the audiobook in the system, but it is now twenty-five people, so it is moving forward, moving through the waitlist, people are getting, and it could be more than that because there may be more added names, eliminated names. It's being accessible. There are ten copies of this book in the system, three of them are on the shelf right now in one library or another. So if anybody wants and desperately needs a copy of the book, they can get it immediately. If anybody wants my copy and so they can sleep at night, I'll return it early. It is your responsibility as the board to faithfully and judiciously guard the resources that we have, use them wisely, and I want to congratulate you on your discernment in, in my view, there's no reason to buy this book for this library. It is, I have read enough of it to know that it's available, anybody can get it, and so I wouldn't recommend against purchasing the book and using our resources for something that's readily available elsewhere to a relative and then twenty people, I mean, look at the waiting list for different books, twenty people is not a good number. So thank you for your discernment and your professional judgment and I'm also a user of the interlibrary loan services for religious and other books that I want to read, I'm happy with that service and again, I think it is a really good cooperative way to stretch resources across the library system for people that and still serve the public that wants access to certain titles. So there are ten titles on the system, you just have to read it in words instead of listening to it on the audiobook. Thank you.
Good evening, Ed Brenner, long-term resident of Downers Grove. Tonight I'd like to further discuss the Downers Grove Public Library homeless situation. As it's budget planning time for both the library and the village, I hope that you're working with the mayor and the village council to address this ever-increasing number of homeless in our library and how to actually help them, not just store them here in the library. We thank the library for what you're doing, realizing helping the homeless is not what the library is meant to do or is qualified to do. Some help examples, you're providing literature that I found, DuPage County Services, Food Pantry's Meal Services. I think it's once a month you do the coffee, donuts, Saturday meet and greet with social interns, I'm not sure who the social interns are, maybe you could enlighten us on that later today. I noted on August twenty-ninth, you've got a program substance abuse disorder information session. These are all great. Julie, last meeting you mentioned that with your good planning, you've saved the library a good amount of money recently. Hopefully you might consider therefore using this extra fund cash for added security in the library, possibly partnering with the Downers Grove Police Department, especially considering a couple incidents I've mentioned in the past, the intoxicated gentleman wandering through the children's room, the chair-throwing incident from a couple of incidents. Recently had an opportunity to meet a Jody Harab, who's a clinical psychologist with, and she's with Equity Downers Grove. Possibly you could incorporate her services with the help with the homeless population here in Downers, I think she'd be a great addition to the programs I earlier mentioned. Again, I hope you're working closely with the mayor during this budget planning time to address and really help the homeless. Look forward to hearing your comments later this evening, thank you.
Noel Manley, I'm from Derry, Illinois. I just had a couple of comments. One is that I had the pleasure of attending the book banning presentation at the Indian Prairie Library yesterday and I'm happy to say, there are many things I agreed with Representative Anna Staubamurray and our Congressman Sean Cassidy. Now I don't align with them politically, but I did find out some of the things they did. And one of the things they talked about was book banning. And they said, quite frankly and quite deliberately, that books should not be banned. Now, we've inquired about irreversible damage and whether you like a book or not, it sparks debate, and this debate is a good thing. We want to have a full fledged, full debate on the issues. But not having that material available, even having to go to another library or another boarding club, another place to find it, isn't an excuse not to have a book. Now there have been requests to have the book placed here and those requests have been dismissed on grounds that this is disinformation. Now disinformation and misinformation are code, it's code that we don't agree with you and we're not going to put that out there. And quite honestly, what is the harm? There is no harm, okay? It's a debate and if people don't like it, that's what democracy is about. We don't have to like one another, we don't have to resent one another, we do have to tolerate one another. That's the first thing. The second thing is your Native land state. Again, it continues to misrepresent or cherry pick history. And as the gentleman mentioned earlier, it does not permit critical thinking. If any of you are a student of history, you know that history's not black and white, it's not good guys and bad times. It's history, our history is about movements, it's about changes, it's about developments among people. And that goes back even with Native folk, Native people. Now my people, Yidjibwe, we occupied Minnesota, northern Minnesota, northern Wisconsin, and northern Michigan. Now I didn't see anything in the Native statement about the Battle of, the Battle of Proving River in seventeen fifty-nine. What was that all about? Well, my people destroyed the San Tissu, we pushed them out of central Minnesota completely, we massacred them. And what was that? Was that genocide? Was that coincidental, what we were talking about? In fourteen eighty-seven, five years before Columbus discovered America, Orlando and San Salvador in the Bahamas, twenty thousand Toltec and Olmec people were sacrificed to the Aztec sun god. Why? Because they were subjected peoples to the Aztec. And their tribute was to give up these people to their ancestors. Now again, critical thinking, are these bad people, are these good people? This is just the way they work. Like to cherry pick what this Native land state says is a misrepresentation of history and is a misrepresentation of what it's about. Now if we go here and we look at what we're really doing is we're really just virtue signaling. We're saying, look at what good people we are because we're acknowledging the sins of the past and that's all there is. We're not really doing anything for Native people other than just merely saying that, well, we're sorry we took your land. What does this library actually do? You know, are we sitting on confiscated land? Are we going to give this land back? Is anybody in this room actually serious about giving their homes away here in Downers Grove to the Native people? My cousins, the Powhatan, I don't think so. But instead, we're just going to say our statement and say, well, we're really sorry and, you know, it won't happen anymore. Well, it's just virtue signaling. Thank you.
Do you have any other comments tonight? Okay, thank you. We will be moving on to-
We will be moving on to item seven, trustee comments.
I have something. In the process of working with the strategic plan and the equity plan over the last few months, I've given some thought to what some of these terms that we throw out so loosely these days really mean to me. And, you know, I thought about saying more formal definition, this is what it is, this is what it isn't. But that's not what I'm doing. I just, I wrote this up quickly this afternoon. And it's kind of, it's just my personal take on the whole EDI thing. Number one, equity. It means each person can pursue their own interests and seek their own truth based on their experiences and aspirations to become their own best self. Without expectation, and we all end up alike or equal in every aspect of our lives. Two, diversity. Respect for anyone who wants to use the library, regardless of race, age, religion, physical or mental ability, gender, sexual orientation, spiritual belief system, or economic status, talents, or where they live.
Or political viewpoint?
Three, inclusion. It's empowerment of more people without disempowering anyone. It's not a quota system. It's not affirmative action. It's the opportunity to see and learn from each other or not. We're adding places at the proverbial table, which means we have to build a bigger table. Everyone is invited to pull up a chair.
Like you, Marty, I also wrote up something very quickly. It doesn't make a lot of sense. I just kind of, kind of not as beautifully eloquently as you said it. But through this strategic planning process and all the different parts of it and our responsibility to our community, I've just been thinking about how we unanimously, as a board, passed Equity Strategic Plan in April of 2022 and where we've come since then and what we've learned since then. And, you know, we reached out to the community. We had over 2,000 people respond to the survey. We had over 140 people come to our focus groups. We had, I'm not even sure how many people, come to our retreat. And through all of that, we kind of learned what our community wants from us and expects from us and also what we want and expect from ourselves. And I'm just really grateful that through all of that, we figured out a way to merge plans together that really speak to the kind of library we are and the kind of library we want to become. A couple of other things, there was a mention of the word balance today. And, you know, there's never been a balance, which is why we are trying to audit our library, to see what books we have, to see what programming we have, to see what our offerings are, to make sure that there truly is a balance. If you look at any statistics and see who the majority of books are about, who books are written for, the number of offerings that have always been there for certain people and not for other people, you'll see that there hasn't been a balance. So I'm really proud of the fact that we are trying to now actually strike a balance and make sure that there are books for everyone and opportunities for everyone. On another note, I just want to call out the number of people who attended the summer reading program. The fact that we are at larger numbers than even pre-pandemic speaks volumes about the kind of library that we are. And I spent lots of days here over the last couple of months, especially in June, and just would sit and watch families come in and everyone leave with something or little kids skipping their way out because they're walking out of storytime or with a little kit to make something. I mean, the people are coming and they love our library. On the issue of unhoused people in the community, I really hope people go to village council meetings and talk to village council about these issues. The library is a public building and we are a safe building and we are a currently air-conditioned building where people can come and feel safe. And we do need to partner with the village council. The village council needs to hear the concerns around community that there are unhoused people here who need help because we can only do so much as a library. And then I just have a last little note that's a little bit personal. I love reading the reports that departments sent in. I love reading librarian's report. And so on a personal note, I would like to say as a member of this community, thank you for your leadership, Julie. I really appreciate it. I'm very proud to be a member of this community.
First, a library issue and then more of a community issue. But I was, I am also happy to be a part of the Downers Grove community and the library is part of Downers Grove community. And one of the ways that the library serves all of the community, especially certain parts of the community that may not have air-conditioned availability, is that the library is a cooling center. We are listed among several cooling centers by the Downers Grove Village Government. I'm proud to say that the library is one of them. Now, the community aspect of that is, of course, that for practical reasons, the library does close at 9:00 in the evening. And therefore, there are other organizations within the community. I'll call out one of them because I'm very well aware of it and let you know so you can share the information if you don't know, that the First Congregation United Church of Christ across the street from the library is beginning tonight. After the library closes, is a cooling center for the next 48 hours or so at least, with the assistance of some other churches in town who are providing volunteer assistance to help us keep that open. That's something that communities do and I'm proud that Downers Grove is doing it.
Nothing like you, certainly don't have to.
Well, I did want to reflect on one thing from our previous executive session, the invitation by a community member and equity team advisory member for the board to attend those meetings. And I think, you know, hearing what both Marty and Manley had to say about EDI work and the way we spoke about it, I feel, one, compelled to do that and to kind of reengage with our group. So I'm not as familiar as I should be with their work. And also, I'm very proud of our kind of recommitment to learning about kind of EDI and the evolution of that as a board and as a community and as a library. It's something that's called out specifically, you know, ongoing learning for trustees. I know I can definitely continue to learn so I can speak more succinctly and more, you know, slightly more knowledge about some of the terms and some of the issues that we're addressing. I guess I'm just kind of thinking about, you know, how this is a journey and I'm way back at the beginning and I really am looking forward to advancing what I know and what I can contribute.
I did go ahead and prepare only because I'll forget if I don't actually write it down. So a couple, a couple positive notes. A huge thank you to Circulation Department for doing an excellent job, you know, specifically in July because our large sorter machine that you see when you return the books was actually down for four days. And for those of you that have been attending regularly, you may recall that we recently signed, renewed our service contract with the LOTCA as part of, you know, our finances. And I think we are very lucky to have that contract in place because I'm sure it is more than paid for itself with just this one incident. So, but thank you again to the Circulation Department for, you know, dealing with that because I'm sure it was not easy. And then thank you to Access Services for, you know, their continued work of re-cataloging materials and really being super innovative about how they present materials, changing especially the children's department and how, you know, children are able to engage with books and other activities and materials is wonderful. It's wonderful to see the increase in visitors over this time last year and the year prior. We had a great month of new library cards being issued and it's wonderful to see more new faces around the library using our services and programs. But lastly, I do want to address the topic of security in the library. In the past, this has been a frequent topic of public comments. As Director Milavec and others have shared, the library has taken significant steps to ensure that the public's safety is top priority. From operating with building monitors and specific incident protocol to an increased dialogue with DGPD, staff has continued to address all safety concerns quickly and in an appropriate manner. Information was shared at the last meeting by a member of the public to imply that the number of police interactions was misrepresented by the library. I researched the DGPD records and it's important to note that not all calls to the library were initiated by the library staff. Rather, as Julie noted, some were initiated by patrons that needed medical assistance or assistance in a parking lot issue. In addition, several visits were due to false alarms or lockouts or extra patrols initiated by police department. Several incidents required multiple police visits. For example, an incident involving a juvenile, and I just want to repeat that it was actually a juvenile, you know, District 58 student that was involved in a furniture throwing incident, that the police had to come and do a follow-up visit with that. Another incident involved DGPL staff requesting the assistance of DGPD and serving a patron with their ban letter. Numbers, especially those that are inflated or inaccurately reported, provide a false narrative of the environment to the library. So I encourage those that have sincere concerns to exercise due diligence in evaluating the library's response to patron incidents. Lastly, as I've requested before, I respectfully ask that all fellow parents of our tween and teen population to please remind their children about what acceptable behavior in a public facility looks like.
With that, if we have any other trustee comments? All right. We will move on to item eight, the library director's report.
Well, I'm going to start with the fact check for Ed Pollak because gender queer is actually in the teen section, not the adult section. But it is on the second floor.
Is it?
I thought it was teen. Anyway, social work interns for the library are from Aurora University. These are students in bachelor's, master's, or PhD programs and they have to do fieldwork as part of their program. We have started offering those and there is a stipend available from the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation who pay for two student interns to be with us each semester. And so unfortunately, over the summer, we did not have a, we did not have interns, but we, our new interns will be starting next week. So we really get a lot of wonderful value-added service from having those interns. As Swapna already said, the chair-thrower was a resident teen. And you also will notice that there's a new face sitting here at the table up front. Unfortunately, Assistant Director Jen Rieske is out on an unexpected medical leave and I'm going on vacation next week. So according to our succession plan, our senior manager, Allison Renell, Children's Services Manager, will be taking the acting director role next week while I am on vacation and while Jen continues to be on leave. Depending on Jen's situation, Allison may also reprise that role at the end of September when I go on a scheduled medical leave. So, thank you, Allison. Allison has the utmost support of the entire management team and staff and she's going to be great at this. And then I just wanted to remind the trustees that the Illinois Library Association Conference Trustee Day is October 26th and there is still time to register. We have two trustees registered so far. And with Jen being out, we were going to be presenting an updated statistical report in September for the board packets, but that may or may not actually happen now. We'll see if we get through it. Maybe we'll get it. Caitlin thinks she can. Caitlin has also been working on an updated financial report for the packet that captures some of the information that trustees have requested. So you will definitely be getting that when the other ones. Also, the incident tracker software implementation, that's to replace the patron incident tracker software pits that we've been using prior. Jen, again, was spearheading that and Allison has agreed to take that over, but she's got to get up to speed on it first. So there will be a delay there. We do have a couple of big projects going on at the end of this month. We are getting both a new security camera system because the software that we were using is obsolete. We're getting some hardware upgrades. So we're going to have that done at the end of the month and also the replacements for our damaged public service desks. Some of you may have noticed that on, like, the Adult and Teen Services Desk, there are some, and the IT Help Desk, there are some places where the laminate has been removed or some of the trim is, has come loose, et cetera. Those desks will be replaced at the end of this month.
All right, moving on to item number nine, new business. Item A is a bylaws update.
And this is a technical change that, to comply with the law and with the request of our village regarding vacancies. And as the bylaws stated, technical changes can be done without the extra meeting.
I will move to approve the bylaws update as presented.
I would like to go ahead and point out one minor thing. The way it's worded, it says trustees serve until their succession are appointed, until their successors are appointed and qualified. And I'm wondering if that needs to maybe read trustees shall serve just so it doesn't sound like we're forcing someone.
May serve.
I'm sorry.
Because you can't force.
You're right, you're right.
Because you can't force somebody. My husband's living in a borgio, but I can't go because they're making me stay on the library.
But other than that addition of that word, may, not shall, may, I think the wording is good.
Does it have to be that exactly, that language, Julie? Because the reason we're making the changes comes from the statute.
I think the issue is there's a delay with the village waiting, which generally should happen in August and it does not appear and it will happen.
No, it did not happen in August.
Clarification, it doesn't require rewording, I would think, because it's obvious. But some trustees who are leaving are not qualified to continue because they are no longer residents or something like that, in which case they cannot continue to serve until replaced. But that's handle other places, just a clarification.
And actually, that is the language directly from the statute.
Yep.
So if you still have a question, I'll hear a second.
Yep.
No other comments?
This is empty, will call?
No. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the bylaws update as stated. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm abstaining on this one.
And trustee slated is abstaining.
The reason being that I'm in a rather awkward position of having my reappointment pending. And it looks like a conflict of interest. It should have been a routine technical change. Thank you.
All right, so we pass the bylaws update. Thank you. Item B is public comment rules.
Item B is public comment rules. Do we have a motion?
I hope we approve the public comment rules as presented.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the public comment rules as presented. I'll go ahead and open up the floor for discussion.
Carissa, does what's presented here reflect what you sent this afternoon? I don't think it's incorporated.
Yes. Oh, no, I didn't see early. Yes, it was.
So this is how we reflect it? Okay. That is fine.
There are other comments, too.
Great. Then I'll move that we adopt these public comment rules.
We do already have a motion.
Sorry.
The motion on the floor.
Try to stick to it.
All right. Any other comments before we go? All right. All those in favor of approving the public comment rules as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? All right. The public comment rules have been approved as presented. And item C, update to land acknowledgement.
There are two wording changes in the sixth paragraph. The addition of officials from the Catholic Church is now officials from the Catholic and other Christian churches with a new citation to the National Native Boarding School Healing Coalition. And in the 13th paragraph, they added "and" mental health issues plus a citation to the statement, higher rates of suicide. There are also many numerous updated and new citations throughout. If you go on the electronic board packet, each of those should be a live link that takes you through to the new citation.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we accept the changes to the land acknowledgement as presented.
I have a second. All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the update to the land acknowledgement as presented. Go ahead and open the floor up for any comments or discussion.
Just a question. Did the Midwest Soaring Foundation participate in these, in any way, in these modifications?
They did not at this time. This was done by staff.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll go ahead and receive the vote. All those in favor of approving the update to the land acknowledgement, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right. Update to the land acknowledgement has been passed. All right. Item number 10, unfinished business. Item A, 2024 levy and budget.
So as requested at the last board meeting, we have included both the flat tax rate version of the budget for the levy, and we have done the lowest we could possibly get it and still reach all of our targets. And that, it turned out to be a 4.3% levy increase. The expenditures have been updated. The expenditures have been updated to reflect the latest information available to us, especially the salaries lines, as we have had some fairly significant changes with various retirements, et cetera. So that has brought the personnel lines down to 4.9% as an increase. Remember, this also includes the salary re-benchmarking that was approved back in April. And then down for the non-personnel lines, we've gotten that down to 4.6%. This is also... This is driven primarily by the electronic resources. As you know, you have the presentation from Van McGarry, our Adult and Teen Services Librarian, about why we need to beef up our electronic resources. So that still is the primary driver here. And the next one is, of course, cleaning services. So we tightened up these lines as much as we possibly could and have gotten this as close as we can. In the 4.3% levy, that brings our... Assuming that the EAV, the... The equalized assessed valuation of all property in the library service area increases by 3.6%, which is the average of the past five years. So we think that's a fairly good estimate. That would put us at a four... The 4.3% increase would bring our tax rate up to approximately .2014, which is only a 0.6% increase over the previous year. As you may remember, the change in the equalized assessed valuation and the change in the levy dollar amount have an inverse effect on the tax rate. This contemplates hitting our target for the capital replacement fund. It reduces the amount to 2% as an increase over the previous year. We had talked about briefly last month whether a 5% increase to the capital reserve fund, we were exceeding our target by the end of the capital reserve plan. So we've taken that back down. The 2% will help get us to our target, and that also maintains the operating reserve target of $478,000 in the ending balance if both revenues and expenses come in as estimated. As you know and can see from previous years, this board has passed budgets that have, on paper, said we were going to go $400,000 to $500,000 in reserve fund balance views. And in 2022, that turned out to be about $160,000. This year, it's probably going to be in the $230,000 range down from that initial estimate of $588,000. So I really believe that this budget is a... That the 4.3% levy increase hits that perfect balance of maintaining our operating and capital reserve targets while meeting the needs on both the personnel and material sides of our expenditures. If we go to the flat budget, in order to get to the target fund balance of $478,000, we would have to reduce the capital replacement fund contribution in order to hit our target for 2027. In subsequent years, we would have to increase that by 6.9% annually. So pay me now or pay me later is the bottom line on that. We've tried to keep that rate as flat as we can. And in the, as you can see, in the 4.3%, that would bring us to .214, and that is still below our fiscal 2022 tax rate. And this library has, over the years, our per $100,000 of home value, the library's actual collections, has stayed pretty close. We are still well, you know, we're under where we were in 2019. So my recommendation to the board is to pass the levy at the 4.3% increase and the budget as presented.
No motion?
Sure.
I'm not sure the proper wording of the motion, but I would move that we approve the budget and approve the budget in the subsequent levy at the 4.3% levy as proposed.
I have a second. We have a motion and a second to approve the 2024 budget and levy at 4.3% as proposed. Going up to the floor for discussion.
I just have one question. Because I... Sorry, this lazes me over. Julie, you said that down the line, we would be talking in the neighborhood of like a 7% raise to play catch-up in a couple of years?
That was if we, if you will, with the flat tax rate. So this, we can continue at a 2%, and it will...
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Thank you.
Yes, you rejected that.
Similar to, I think, last year's discussion, I'm more comfortable with keeping things more within a band rather than making big changes to either the budget, the tax amount, or the library balance amount, especially given that we're about to go into implementation of the strategic plan, and we don't necessarily know how that's all going to play out. And so if we can, you know, not make any wild adjustments one way or another and have more of that wiggle room later on when we know more what this looks like that's living among us, I think that's a better option.
We have very specific items later now because of the strategic plan, including capital items, and we've got a little bit more leeway.
I've always, you know, I have a long record of speaking in favor of what I call smoothing of the rate and the levy. I haven't, I believe, I don't believe I've used the term pay me now or pay me later, but it does apply. It does apply. And it also gives us just the... I mean, we're talking about a few thousand dollars here, frankly, and it gives us a little bit of cushion in case our projection for capital replacements were a little too conservative. And if we have some roof repairs, or some boiler repairs, or some air conditioning repairs, it doesn't disrupt the budget and require a big bump in the levy for the next year. I believe in the smoothing. If we have very good luck, then we can smooth down in the next years. But this makes a more predictable and even kind of expectation on the part of our constituencies.
Just a huge thank you to Julie and everyone else involved in this very massive undertaking. You present things very well, and, you know, you came back with a lot of different options. And I think we really kept it as low as possible while still keeping, you know, the financial security of the library and the capital reserves and everything. So just thank you again for all of your hard work crunching numbers. If we don't have any other comments, we'll go ahead and move this to a vote. Because it is financial, we'll go ahead and do a roll call. Trustee Dory?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Guntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sledak?
Yes.
President Gagami?
Yes.
All right. We have to pass the 2024 levy budget. We will move on to item B, 2023 to 2028 High Level Strategic Plan.
All right. So the board met in a committee of the whole meeting just prior to this meeting, and we did actually make a few changes. So I am projecting the changes that were made so that you all know what we did. In the vision statement here, the original vision said, "The heart of a diverse community providing inspiring ideas, community connections, and empowering opportunities." The board decided that that was too many ins, and they needed to fix it. So we did. So the vision statement is now, "The heart of a diverse community that provides inspiring ideas, community connections, and empowering opportunities." Then on the second page of this high-level plan... Now I have to remember. Okay. The first bullet point, it was originally... There are now two bullet points where there was one. It used to have a clause. It used to read, "Offer increasingly innovative and engaging programs and services library-wide with particular focus on drawing in more teens and tweens to become regular users of the library." Separated those out, took out the "with particular" and just made it focus on drawing in teens and tweens, and added the word "relevant" in "innovative, relevant, and engaging programs." And then I'm going to jump over here because this is just a little easier. In the overall outcome, we added "safely and equitably" to this outcome, which now reads, "All community members can safely, comfortably, and equitably access and utilize the building and library services." And then the final... We added a bullet point here. The second bullet point, "Create lasting and mutually beneficial relationships with other entities that share our same values." That is lifted directly from the guidelines for partnerships that the library uses. And the board wanted to focus in on partnerships and be very clear about their importance. So they added this goal here.
Same thing.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Minor question here.
Sure.
I had the feeling when we were discussing this that it said that other entities that share our values... I wasn't sure the word "same" was there.
Oh, you're right. You're right. We did say "same." All right.
Because I don't want to imply that...
So as amended with striking that word.
I don't want to imply that everybody has to share all our values.
And then, and a special thank you and shout-out to Caitlin, who ran very quickly back to her office, made the changes on the document, printed it out for the board, and emailed it over to me so that I could project it up here so that everybody could see what all the changes were. So, thank you. And then on the addendum, which includes suggested initiatives and more specific outcomes, most of the suggested initiatives came directly from our strategic retreat and then also from the Equity Strategic Plan. And on page... And under the access... Under the access strategic initiatives, we added, the original said, "To make anti-hate statements to ensure HIP-MPGs feel seen and valued." We changed the wording to "continue to make anti-hate statements according to our existing framework to ensure HIP-MPGs feel seen and valued." The board felt it was a... The board felt it was important to reference that framework that they have approved and that now guides the way that we do our anti-hate statements. And those are all of the changes.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me. I will approve, I will make a motion to approve the combined 2023, 2028 high-level strategic plan as presented, and direct the staff to prepare a draft of the fiscal year 2024 annual plan. We want to go ahead and just make a note of that one more change. With the change of that word, striking out the word same. We don't want that. Are you going to reset? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the 2023, 2028 high-level strategic plan as presented with the strike out of the word same under the turn upward section. Open up for discussion.
Just a quickie, we've got a very few pages here, but they reflect months and months of effort, not only by our staff and our board, but also so many members of our community that met in focus groups, and many focus groups. There were so many people involved, and the, over 2,000 people who responded to the survey, that's all reflected in here, and it's a marching plan, and a pretty impressive and demanding marching plan for our board and staff and our whole community.
I think we need to note the work that the staff has done behind the scenes with the consultant on this, too. I know that all of, all of your senior and middle management have been involved at one degree or another, and everybody else has had feedback at various stages. So the staff has done a masterful job of coordinating all of this to keep us out of the weeds, unmingering parts of it, and we appreciate it.
All right, we'll move, go ahead, if there's none of comments, go ahead with a vote. All those in favor of approving the 2023, 2028 high-level strategic plan as presented with the proposed strike out of the word same, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining?
Yes, thank you. The staff is really excited to get started on the annual work plan and really figure out what the initiatives are for the first year.
Many people in this audience have participated in this process, thank you.
All right, at this time, we will be moving into an executive session, which is a closed session. So we'll be doing that, and upon reconvening, the general meeting will simply be adjourned, so we won't be missing anything. We are re-adjourning. Reconvening, convening, 9:20, 9:21.
Reconvene, be adjourned.
Yes.
Whatever, she knows the words.
So I will move that following the receipt and review of the thorough investigation by independent law firm against the blink into the pending personnel matter, oh, sorry, that we close the investigation into the pending personnel matter and direct board president Gagami to write a letter to said individual conveying the results of the investigation. Second.
Wonderful. We have a motion and a second, and no discussion. That has been stated.
God forbid.
Any last minute comments?
There's one more. Forgive me, we're a little punchy.
All right, all those in favor of approving the motion and second, that course I have the forward, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining? Wonderful, that has been resolved, and we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:22 PM.